Good evening, Milton, and welcome to the special town meeting preview show. I'm Liz Dillon, your town moderator, and with me here is Jay Funling, the Chair of the Warrant Committee. Hi, Jay, how are you?
Hello, Liz. Good to be here tonight.
Good to see you.
Getting ready for town meeting.
Wonderful. Just a reminder to everyone watching at home that town meeting, our special town meeting, is going to be Monday, October 27th, at the high school, and then as needed, we have also reserved Tuesday, the 28th, and then Wednesday, the 29th, as well. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. Great. So should we start going through the warrant?
Sure, let's start going through the warrant.
Wonderful. Jay, I want to say thank you to you and to the Warrant Committee for working really hard over the past, well, for quite a long time for you, but over the past, you know, few months, really getting this warrant ready. Really appreciate all of your hard work, so thank you. I know that it's been a lot. We have nine very exciting new articles here, and so yeah, let's dive in.
Yeah, so thanks a lot, Liz. I do, I want to thank the Select Board and all the other boards and committees for getting the articles to us early on. We had most of the articles in our hands by mid-August, which gave us plenty of time to do our work, which is very much appreciated. And the way we, I'll give you a little bit of inside baseball. The way we did our work, so often on the Warrant Committee, we'll get an article in front of us, maybe it's short, maybe it's long, and sort of all 15 members will sort of wonder, well, how much or how little should I look into this?
I remember.
Yes.
Thank you.
So what we did this time was we got two Warrant Committee members for each article, and said, you're going to be the expert on this. You dive into it, you talk to whoever you want to talk to, you dig through it, and come back and report to the larger committee. And that seemed to work pretty well. That way, everybody knew what they were responsible for, didn't hold anyone back. Anyone could dig into any article they wanted to, but we knew for a fact that two people would really dig into it and come back and tell the rest of the group. So that seemed to work quite well.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm glad that everybody had an opportunity to really go through these articles. So anyway, if you want to start with Article Number One, can you tell us about this article? My understanding is that it relates to the upcoming election.
Yes, there is an election coming up on the 4th of November, so Article One is paying for that election. We have to pay for the materials, we have to pay for most of it is people's time, and the election is going to happen.
Right.
And the money is going to get spent one way or the other. It doesn't depend on what town meeting decides. But it will cost approximately $60,000, that's how much the last special election cost. And so the question for town meeting is, will you allocate $60,000 from the free cash to pay for this election? As I said, the election's going to happen, the money's going to get spent. The question is, do we budget for it, and we know what budget it comes out of, or will this budget run a deficit and we'll have to scramble at the end of the year? That doesn't benefit anybody, so we'd rather be orderly about it and plan where it's going to be paid for.
Now, can you remind the people at home what free cash is? Because I know that could be a new term for some people.
Yes, I used the term free cash, and that's something I didn't know until I started with the Warrant Committee.
Me too.
At the end of every year, so June 30th, or July 1st of last year, we were, we did a little bit better than the budget. We spent a little bit less money than we had budgeted for, we brought in a little bit more money than we had budgeted before. And that's by intention, because you don't want it to be the opposite. So at the end of that, that's called free cash. That's, you know, you're doing a little bit better than you had budgeted for. And you can take that money, it's, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, it's usually not a good idea to take that money and use it to hire new employees, because you don't know if that money's going to be around for the next year. But you can use that to buy equipment, you can use it to pay for one-time expenses like this. So that's money that we had around and could allocate to this.
Thanks, Jay. I think that'll be helpful for people. So the Warrant Committee's recommendation is to go ahead and take that money, appropriate it from free cash, am I correct?
Correct.
Right, which is the same as the Select Board, is that correct?
Yes.
Perfect.
And you raised a good point, that in this article, this warrant, we have nine articles on this warrant. For all nine of the articles, the Warrant Committee suggests the town takes some action. In some cases, we suggest they, that the town accept the article as presented, like in Article One. In some cases, we're suggesting a different, slightly, a slight change from what's presented. Now, a reminder, you know, town meeting members will be reminded of this, the town meeting discussion starts-
I will remind them.
The town meeting discussion starts with the suggestion by the Warrant Committee.
That's correct.
So if our suggestion is different than the article is printed above, the discussion will start with our recommendation.
That's correct. Town meeting votes primarily on the Warrant Committee's recommendation, so we'll go through that before town meeting for people that are confused, and then also before the relevant articles, which would be seven and eight, as you mentioned, where that will be an issue. So thank you. Anything else to add on Article One that you have?
No, I think we should move to Article Two.
Perfect. Let's move on to Article Two then. Can you tell people about this article, which is allowing the town to, I believe, not give permits to people that are behind on payments to the town, is that correct?
Exactly. This is adopting a state law which, which would let the treasurer talk to all the other boards and committees, or boards in town, and let people know who's behind on their taxes, and would allow the town to not grant certain licenses if someone's behind on their taxes. So there, a typical example would be if someone's behind on their property taxes, and they want to improve their house, and they go to try to get a building permit, the building department might say, no, we can't give you a building permit yet until you're up on your taxes. And all of this, this is, you know, several pages of legal language. This is really adopting a state law as it is written out. So you might ask, why do they have all these exceptions? Why do they have all this wording? This wording is prescribed by state law, and we're adopting it. The town treasurer is really in favor of this article. This would give her another tool to help collect taxes from people who are behind. And keep in mind, the town voted to have an override last year. So we all voted to increase our own taxes, and that's, that's us pulling together to say, okay, we've got to chip in, we've got to keep the town government running. If that's happening, we also want everybody to pay the taxes they owe, so this is a way to enforce that.
Sure, wonderful. That's really helpful. Anything else on Article Two before we skip right on ahead to Article Three?
No, I think Article Three is a good thing to go to.
Okay, wonderful. Why don't you tell us what Article Three entails here?
Sure. Article Three, we're still talking about property taxes a bit. It's very brief, as printed in the warrant. It's establishing a tax fund to aid elderly and disabled residents with their taxes. So what this will be, this will be a voluntary fund. It will be, anyone will have the opportunity to contribute to this fund, and then this fund will be used to help elderly and disabled residents with their taxes. Now, you might read this brief article, or hear my description, and say, okay, what are the details? If I give to this fund, who's elderly? Who's disabled? Is it low-income people? Is it anyone? And all of those are good questions. All of those questions will be answered by the board that this article sets up. So this article sets up a fund that people can contribute to, and a board, which will establish that fund and set up all the rules. So we on the Warrant Committee had several questions, you at home might have several questions. None of those questions can be answered till we set up a board to run this fund, and then it'll be up and running, allowing people to make extra contributions to help elderly and disabled people in town.
And I noted that, for those of you wondering at home, who's going to comprise of this committee here? That would be the Chair of the Board of the Assessors, the Town Treasurer, and then three individuals that would be selected by this Select Board.
Yes.
Right. And I should have mentioned that Article Two, as well as Article Three, were submitted by our Select Board.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I know that people had raised some concerns about, or have been raising some concerns about taxes for the elderly and disabled. So my understanding is that this is supposed to help ameliorate some of those concerns.
Yes. Again, with all the discussion about the, the override last year, anything we can do to help our, our residents who have a hard time paying their property taxes, the town government is looking to do that.
Okay, great. Now on to Article Four.
Yes, Article Four, this is an interesting one. This is, I'll call it the Community-Wide Greenhouse Gas Emissions Article. It, it basically directs the Select Board and the members of the town administration to look for ways to reduce greenhouse gases. It's sort of an interesting article in that it doesn't require very much, if at all. It's, it doesn't put requirements in the town for reduce the greenhouse gases, it does two things. One is, it tells the town government where the town wants to be. So the town as a whole, through their town meeting representatives, if they vote to approve this, are saying, yes, we think climate change is important, we want to take economically reasonable ways to reduce our town, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And so that, that's powerful, that, you know, the people working at Town Hall, they make decisions every day regarding our town government, they want to know what the town wants them to do. So one thing is it sends that message. Another thing it does is it's a step in becoming eligible for state grants. So if we want to become a climate leader community, that's an official title, there are six steps to getting there. I won't go into it in too much depth, but suffice to say, we've taken six of those, sorry, we've taken three of those six steps, and this will be another step that we need to do to move towards becoming a climate leader community. If we do the last two things, which are municipal decarbonization roadmap study and adopting a zero emission vehicle first policy, if we do those things, which are not part of this article, then we'll be a climate leader community and will be eligible for grants, which can be quite significant.
Now, my understanding that this article itself, by adopting that, that would be the fourth of the different ones. So you, we've done three, this would be the fourth, and then there are two more.
Correct.
And then by becoming a climate leader, we then would be eligible for certain grants.
Correct.
Okay.
So just passing this article alone doesn't make us in that category eligible for grants?
But it's a step along the way if people choose to do that. And then I noted that, you're right, this article does not provide any kind of requirement for what the Select Board must do.
Correct.
But it enables the town to think that, like you said, this is something that people are concerned about, or, and this was submitted to us by the Climate Action Planning Committee, so that they're charged by the Select Board with looking into these things, so they've brought this to the attention of the town.
Correct. So it gives guidance to the Select Board and the town. It doesn't require, certainly doesn't require economically inefficient-
Sure.
-climate solutions.
Right. Maybe a factor for people to consider.
Yes.
Right. Wonderful, okay. Now on to Article Five, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Can you explain to people, before we dig in, what the Master Plan Implementation Committee is, for those people who might not know at home?
Sure. So if anyone who lived in town, I believe 11 years ago, forming the Master Plan was a big ordeal. I remember going to several meetings at various community centers, and there were lots of people and lots of, you know, easels and markers and people writing things down. It was a big community-wide effort to make this master plan, which is, you know, how do we want basically the development of the town to go in the future? So that was established, I want to say 11 years ago, and there was a Master Plan Implementation Committee, as the name implies, tasked with implementing that. They were supposed to last for 10 years. A year ago, we granted them, Town Meeting granted them a one-year approved, so they, they are on a 11-year timeline for, you know, they meet regularly and are supposed to make recommendations for what can we do to help implement the master plan. And for example, one of the recent things they've done is parking at the library. They're suggesting that a new parking lot be added near the library, and that's, that's a work in progress, if you've seen the Select Board discuss it recently, but Master Plan Implementation Committee helped get it to where it is. So right now, they have a fixed time limit, their term is expiring. This article would replace the Master Plan Implementation Committee with a Master Plan Committee, which would not have a fixed time limit, it would just exist, no limited term. Similar to the current committee, the current committee has seven people, this would have nine people, and it would have similar responsibilities, which is review the master plan and make recommendations for implementing it.
Wonderful. And I noted that there were certain requirements for membership, so one would be from the planning board, one would be from the Select Board, and then the other people would have various different kinds of expertises laid out in the article, so people should take a look at that.
Exactly.
Wonderful. All right.
Okay.
Zipping right on along.
And all, all the ones we've discussed so far, the Warrant Committee supports them as they were suggested, proposed by the Select Board.
Exactly. And then I wanted to mention that Article Five was submitted by the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
You're right, I misspoke, yes.
So just for people following along at home, any of the elected boards in town, so the planning board, school board, Board of Health, and-
Select Board?
Select Board, thank you, yes.
I don't know.
Library trustee can submit, yes, can submit an article, but so can the committee. So here, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is appointed both by the planning board and the Select Board, and so they can also introduce a warrant article, as can citizens on a citizen's petition, which we've seen in recent past. But, okay, moving on to Article Six, if you will.
Okay. Article Six is the School Building Committee Land Swap Article. So what this is about, a lot of people might remember the land swap article that Town Meeting passed a few years ago, and the original article had a clause in it. He was taking the land on Gao Road, making that available to the schools, taking other land in town, making that available to the Conservation Commission, and it included a clause that said it would revert if the town does not approve a school within five years. That was done because people didn't want the so-called land to be made available forever. They wanted it to be for a school and for a short amount, certain amount of time. So that had a five-year time limit. Now, since then, the town has been approved for funds by the Mass School Building Authority, which is a big financial benefit to the town. That is probably tens of millions of dollars that will help to build a school, but it is also a slower process. So the School Building Committee looked at this, looked at the slower process from the Mass School Building Authority, and said, okay, if we're going to do this, we're probably going to come close, but not quite hit the five-year deadline. So sticking with that, to keep the funds, to keep the tens of million dollars that the schools, that the state is approving for us, and also to keep the project moving, it's prudent to move the timeline back. So that's, that's all this is asking. This article is saying, take the five-year timeline to add previously, and make it a 10-year timeline. So, and the Warrant Committee supports this. I do want to be clear about what this is and what this is not.
Yes, thank you.
This is not a vote on the land swap. The town already voted on the land swap, did it a couple of years ago, and approved it. This is also not a vote on if we'll have a new school. That will come later. The School Building Committee is working on it, they're working out all the details, that will come later. This is only an article that takes the five-year timeline, turns it into a 10-year timeline.
Right, sure. And that would be to June 30th, 2033, as it says there. So that would be the new limited time period that our understanding would be that if there were to be a school built, it would be during that period of time, under the Mass School Building Authority, new timeframe, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when we discussed this at, among the Warrant Committee, there was some discussion about, should the land swap have happened? There was some discussion about, do we need a new school? And we sort of kept that discussion to a minimum, because again, that's not the article in front of us that we're discussing.
Right. I think that sometimes it's helpful to remind people that there can be multiple articles based on a decision that's happened in the past. So we're really going to keep the discussion to the article at hand, and if people have questions about that, they should feel free to contact me in advance, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that that people may have. And my email, I believe, is edillon@townofmilton.org, I want to say, but yes.
Is it org or gov? I can't-
Dot org.
The new one.
Yes, it's the new one. But I am on the town website as well, so if I misspoke, you can find me on the Town Meeting page. So thank you for that. And that was submitted by the School Building Committee. So the School Building Committee and the Warrant Committee are recommending that the timeframe be kicked out until 2030, 2033.
Yes. And there is something I forgot to mention about the last five articles about the recommendation.
Thank you.
So if you look at Article Two, Article Three, Article Four, and if you look at the recommendations, and if you're a longtime town warrant reader, you'll see this one looks different. The recommendations look different than what we've seen in the past. In the past, we'd print the article in normal font, and then say, recommended by the Warrant Committee, and we would print the whole thing, word for word, again. It might be a paragraph, it might be a page, it might be multiple pages. It would be printed twice, first is the article, second is the recommendation. And sometimes you'd go through it like, where's Waldo, and say, are there any differences between the original article and the recommendation? What we've done with this warrant, this is, I believe, the suggestion of the town administrator, and also with the approval of the new town council, I'll hold up a visual, is that we have the article, yeah, nope, you can't see that. We have the article, and then the recommendation is simply a line that says, recommend that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Right.
So it's much shorter, much briefer, much more to the point.
Yes, and that difference is also highlighted in my letter at the beginning of the warrant. And then, so when we look at what are we discussing and then voting on, it is the recommendation by the Warrant Committee, and then it references the language before for those particular articles. So when we move on to the next article, we'll talk about what it looks like when something is a little bit different. But people may have questions about how this is different. It really isn't, it's just a shortened way, and like you said, I can't speak for town council, but I think it makes sense, because we want to make sure that there aren't differences that people didn't intend. So it's very clear where there are amendments and where there aren't, and people can follow along much, much more easily. So I think that that's very prudent.
Yeah. It's a change, I think it's a change for the better.
Yes, thank you. So Article Seven, now, this came, different article, but this topic came before us in a town meeting previously. So can you explain what this article is and kind of how it came to be in front of us this time, or this article came to be in front of us? I know it's different.
No, I think starting with the history is a very good place for discussing Article Seven. So last February, at Town Meeting, so February of this year, six-ish months ago, there was an article to allow alcohol in town-owned buildings and on town-owned land under certain conditions. For example, the Select Board had to approve each, each event, et cetera. At that Town Meeting, Town Meeting amended it to be restricted only to allow alcohol inside town buildings and not outside on town land. This was due largely to public health concern expressed during that Town Meeting by Town Meeting members. So Town Meeting approved it for inside buildings, but not on town land, outdoors. Now, what happened next? Next, in April of this year, the Select Board held a public hearing on this article where they collected more views. Quite a few residents showed up, gave their opinions, Select Board collected information. So now, what has happened here is the Select Board put forward an article incorporating some of those suggestions, both from the Town Meeting last February and from the public hearing last April. So that's where we are now. The goal of this article is to allow some outdoor events to serve alcohol, and some organizations like the Chamber of Commerce and the Milton Arts Center are very supportive of this. They think it will lead to more community gatherings that aren't just child-focused. It's great to have some child-focused events, it's also good to have some adult-focused events, and they think this will increase participation in some of the non-child-focused events. So the Select Board article is different than what was proposed in February. It contains restrictions on outdoor alcohol events, such as it requires risk bans for anyone getting alcohol, drinking alcohol. It also gives the Select Board the option of limiting alcohol to a restricted area. If it's a large area, the Select Board can say, can choose to say, okay, we're going to have a beer garden in this quarter over here, but not everywhere. And now, let's, let's get to the recommendation, which, as you said, looks a little different. So previously, throughout this warrant, the recommendation just said, approve as above. The Warrant Committee made a couple of amendments to what the Select Board suggested. And so if you look at our recommendation, we say, approve everything as printed above, but make these couple changes. One change is just a slight wording change, and the second change is we recommended, and again, this was a suggestion from some public health residents in town, that the vendor should post the product description and the alcohol by volume for each product. So you can know, is this, is this wine strong? Is it weak? Is it what? We thought, that was, that was a change that the Warrant Committee made to what the Select Board proposed, but we thought that was reasonable, was public health concern, and not onerous to a person holding the event. So where am I? One, the breaking news on this is that the Board of Health had a meeting on October 14th, as we're recording that, that's just two nights ago, and the Board of Health said they support this article as written, which that's very good. We didn't have the Board of Health's recommendation when our, we made our suggestion. So the Warrant Committee very much hopes that this will lead to more and better attended outdoor events in town.
Wonderful, yes. And I see, from being on the Warrant Committee previously, I see that there are these additional changes. So people may remember, if they go back and look at their warrant from February of this year, that these particular one through four were not set forth herein. The Select Board retained that right to implement sort of restrictions, but this lays it out much more clearly. And then your specific recommendations are just like a scribner's change, for one, and then having people have clarity over what they're buying, consuming, and things like that. So kind of, not a wholesale change here. And then, just as a reminder to people, I know we said this at the outset, but, and I will remind people at Town Meeting, but the vote and the discussion, and then the discussion and then the vote by Town Meeting members will be the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. So we'll be discussing the language of the Select Board with these two changes included therein. And I'll make that clear to people again, but just so that people can prepare their remarks or their thoughts and how they want to vote on that ahead of time.
Yeah, in recent years, I don't know if we've had many situations where the Warrant Committee's recommendation differed from the article as printed. So I think even moderate to long-term Town Meeting members might appreciate the reminder.
Yes, thank you. We will definitely do that. And then moving on to eight, the Light Trespass Bylaw. So again, this is one that has, the topic has come before Town Meeting a couple of times. Can you tell us a little bit of the history there and how this one is different than what people may remember seeing in the past?
Sure, sure. So a light trespass bylaw was proposed at the February Town Meeting, February of this year.
A very eventful Town Meeting in February.
Well, yes.
Now, I don't know, we have these two articles.
We have lots of, lots of, lots of callbacks to the February Town Meeting.
Yes, it's great.
People might want to pull up the video and watch it.
Yes, that's a good idea.
So at the February Town Meeting, this was proposed, but it was pulled back at the last minute. It wasn't actually, I believe it wasn't even discussed on the floor of Town Meeting, because there was still some work thought needed to be done on the bylaw. And then at the May Town Meeting, a similar thing happened. It was printed in the warrant, and, you know, during Town Meeting, maybe slightly before Town Meeting, it was pulled back. I don't believe it was discussed on the floor, because again, the wording wasn't quite finalized and ready. The thought was to then have it at the June Town Meeting. The June Town Meeting was quite busy with the MBTA article.
I remember.
So they decided not to put forward several articles, including this one. So after not having it in the February Town Meeting, not having it in the May Town Meeting, not having it in the June Town Meeting, the town wanted to keep trying. Because I would like to point out that when it got pulled back at the February and the, and the May Town Meeting, it wasn't because there was a widespread concern that we shouldn't have a light trespass article, quite the opposite. I think everybody I've talked to, everybody I've worked with has thought, yes, we should have a light trespass article. The question is, what wording do we have, you know, how do we make it actually work? So we think a lot of people in town want this, but we haven't been able to get the wording together to work. So the Warrant Committee and the Select Board, and, you know, our town administrator and others who work with us in Town Hall, really wanted to get a workable article this time, and I think we have. So this is the article that Warrant Committee made the most changes to. And I will say that if you look at it printed in the warrant, it's the old-school printing. We've got the entire article printed, then we've got the entire Warrant Committee recommendation printed, because we did make quite a few pages, changes. So if you're reading this in the warrant, I would say, save yourself time, get straight to the bolded language, read the Warrant Committee's recommendation, because that is where the discussion is going to start at Town Meeting. So now, I've been talking about the article. What is the article? This article is to prevent excessive light trespassing, excessive light shining from one person's property into another person's property. If I live next door to you, Liz, and you have a very bright light shining into my bedroom window-
I don't.
If you do-
Okay.
Then I will report you, because that is what this bylaw is supposed to prevent. And I do want to be clear, this is not, there's a term called a dark skies law. This is not a law for general light pollution, which is there, you know, it's not a light, it's not a law to have dimmer lights all over town to help you see the milky way.
Right.
That's a laudable goal, if the town wants to do it. That may be a future law, perfectly fine. That's not the primary goal of this law. This law is for one neighbor shining light onto another neighbor. So if, if such a thing happens, if a neighbor is intruding on another neighbor, well, first of all, what we hope is that the neighbor will talk to each other. Can you please point your light a different direction? They might even say, you know, we have this new bylaw, can you please point your light in another direction? That's what we hope will happen. But if it comes to it, if there's a report of light trespass, then the Inspection Services Department will come out. It's their job to determine if it's a nuisance or not. They will do certain light measurements as outlawed in the, as outlined in the bylaw, but it's their job to determine if it's a nuisance and if it's trespass or not. Now, if, if I'm accused of light trespass on my neighbor- Now, if, if I'm accused of light trespass on my neighbor, there are quite a few ways that, you know, there are quite a few ways for me to fix this without getting a fine. For example, I have 30 days to fix it. I can point a light a different direction. I can turn on a dimmer. I can turn it off. Also, there's the ability to appeal. There is a, this bylaw calls for the, the Select Board to set up a subcommittee of three people. So if I've been accused of light trespass and I think, no, my light is perfectly fine, I can appeal to those three people. That's one thing that the Warrant Committee felt very strongly about. There should be an appeal process. We've got that in there. And if all of those things don't work out, then there is a fine at the end. But what we're really hoping is that it can get worked out before the fine. Also, I would say there are protections for uses, like motion sensing lights that turn off after a short time. We discussed this a good bit at the Warrant Committee. Now, some of us felt like if there's a motion sensing light, if someone, you know, works a late shift and they're coming home, they should be entitled to a well-lit driveway when they come home. Others felt like if it's light trespass, it's light trespass. It shouldn't be allowed. In the end, we allowed for, and I'll focus on the, on the exception for, you know, a timed, a motion sensing light. One thing we thought was, right now, all of this is legal. Right now, there are no light trespass bylaws. So we wanted to err on the side of being not stripped. The, the light level we have is 10 lux. Lux is a measure of lightness. It's, it's higher. It's more generous. It's, it's less onerous than other towns have. Also, things like allowing the motion sensing light. Because we figure, right now, all of these things are legal. So if we're moving to make some of them illegal, let's move slowly, incrementally. And then we'll see, I don't know, if there's a rash of people still saying, no, my neighbor's motion sensing light is still a disturbance, then maybe we need to revise the bylaw. But we want to take small steps and, and see what we can.
And I wanted to point out two things. One is that there are exceptions listed, as you mentioned. So there are certain exceptions for lights that light up trees, for example, on your property, certain holiday lighting, seasonal lighting like that, and then lights to light up athletic fields and things like that. So I know that a lot of that was discussed by the Warrant Committee previously and then also this time. So people should definitely take a look at those exceptions. And then can you explain how this relates to individual people versus does it also apply to the town as well? So I know that people are concerned about lights lighting up fields and things like that. So if you can talk about that a little bit.
Sure. What I think you're going to is, yeah, this is mostly for one person violating.
Neighbor next to neighbor.
Yeah, a neighbor violating a neighbor, maybe a business violating a neighbor. But this is for one property owner and to another property owner. Now, one difference between the article as submitted and the article as recommended by the Warrant Committee is that originally it said that you could not have light trespass onto wilderness, conservation area, habitats, reserves, and waters of the United States. All of this is beneficial. I'm not sure exactly which lands in town are designated as wilderness or conservation area, perhaps the Blue Hills. That, that's laudable to not want to shine the bat signal into the Blue Hills. Nobody wants that. But we thought that since the bulk of this article is about a neighbor and a neighbor.
Right.
It's about a neighbor saying, I'm being upset by another neighbor shining a light into my property. We wanted to take it back a minute and not say, onto conservation areas, onto wildernesses, and just say, onto other properties. I believe it says, onto, onto residential, yeah, onto residential properties.
Yep. So my point was that it doesn't necessarily apply directly to the town. So if the town has lighting, however, there are specific exceptions. So if you on your property had some kind of emergency lighting because your water main broke and now the town, the DBW has come in and installed lighting so that they could do work at night, you're protected under the way that this is written because it's emergency lighting. If there are certain lights that you're required to have for whatever reason by statute, legally required lights, that's also a protection. So.
When you say it doesn't apply to the town, I mean, if, for example, there's a house right next to Tucker School.
Sure.
If the town was shining lights on that house, it would apply to them.
Protect the individual people, right. It's more of a person-on-person situation.
Yes. Or a person, if you live next to a business, if you live next to a school, if you live next to a whatever, and you're getting light pollution.
Correct.
You can also complain.
Right.
I don't believe it applies to the state, the state or federal.
At large, if the town just has a bright light that's not affecting anyone. It really has to be individual neighbors that have to bring up a complaint about something that's affecting them in their own person, in their own household.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, wonderful. And this one, I believe, was also submitted by the Select Board. Is that correct?
The Lighting Trespass Bylaw, yes.
And then.
Sorry, I will say, the changes we made, the Warrant Committee recommended quite a few changes. We ran a near-final version by the Select Board, and they gave us their thoughts. They approved some of our changes. They had thoughts on some of our other changes. And then we made some more changes. So right now, I don't know if the Select Board agrees with all the changes we made. We'll hear from them at Town Meeting if not before.
Perfect.
So we know there are final some changes and we'll hear from them if they like the other changes or not.
Wonderful. They'll let us know. And then as a reminder, again, it will be the amended language that we'll be discussing and then people will be voting on at Town Meeting. So just as a reminder.
The language in bold.
Right. And we'll remind people of that again. So moving on to Article Nine.
Okay, Article Nine.
The last article.
It is the last article, and it is also the last article which has a different method of being printed in the warrant. The, the recommendation is not where the, where the difference pops out. The recommendation is just, we approve the article. The article is taking a current zoning bylaw and making slight changes to it. So it's printed in what I know as redline format. So if you read the article, you'll see a lot of things underlined and you'll see a lot of things scratched out. That means the things with the line through them are in the current bylaw. And we're, you know, making a, the article is suggesting take out those wording. And the underlying things are not in the current bylaw and are being suggested to be added to the bylaw. So what this is about is we previously, we currently have a law that if there's new development in town that creates traffic congestion, the new development, as part of getting permission to build their building, do their work, they can be compelled to contribute to a fund which would be used to relieve that congestion. It would, you know, be, that money would be applied to traffic, traffic mitigation efforts. Now, the current law does not include a few things. It does not include business districts. It only applies to a couple of districts, but not residence districts or business districts. So that, obviously, you want it to apply to business districts because that's businesses or who's going to create the most traffic congestion presumably. And also, the current law applies to projects that apply for special permits. And we know, especially with some of the zoning bylaw changes we've had recently, a lot of projects not only will not get a special permit, but will go for site plan review by the planning board. So this applies to projects that are getting a special permit or projects that are getting a site plan review. So that's going to encompass a lot more projects. There are a lot more projects that the planning board will be able to say, ah, you're affecting the traffic. You have to contribute to this fund to help mitigate the traffic.
Yep, perfect. And we'll hear from the planning board on this, I'm sure. And of course, no one is concerned about traffic in Milton, so.
Well, it sometimes is a, is a topic of discussion.
Yes, wonderful.
Again, this is a good one to keep in mind, what the scope of the article is. When I was reading it, I was thinking, is it, is it prudent to have this traffic mitigation fund? Well, we already have one.
Yes.
So we may be asking ourselves, is it prudent to expand it or not? But we already have the baseline law set up.
And again, if people have questions about that, but the scope will be this, the changes. So again, not whether or not it's prudent. That could be a discussion for another day. But really, these changes and whether they should be implemented as recommended by the planning board. So we can go over that at Town Meeting, but if people have questions ahead of time, they can feel free to submit them to me. Wonderful. So I think that's all of the articles and the whole warrant for our October special Town Meeting, which is on October 27th, 7:30 at Milton High School, and then continuing on the next day and the next as needed.
How many days do you think it will be?
Oh, I can't even begin to say. Not entirely up to me. But I look forward to a lot of really fulsome discussion because if I know anything, it's that our Town Meeting members will come prepared and will have a lot of good insight and thoughts and discussion. So I look forward to that. And thank you so much for coming and discussing this with me. And also thank you to the entire Warrant Committee for all of their hard work. And then, as you mentioned, all the boards and committees, especially those that have submitted articles for publication in the warrant. And thank them again for submitting it in a very timely fashion so that your committee could do their good work, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. And I'd like to thank the members of my Warrant Committee also. They are a delight every meeting.
Wonderful.
I walk out of there happy.
Good. Well, then, I'm glad I appointed them. Well, so thank you. And we look forward to seeing you all on October 27th. Individuals who are not Town Meeting members are of course invited to come and watch along, or you can watch it on Milton Access. And thank you so much. And I look forward to seeing you there, Jay.
Look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all.